Okay, it is six thirty. We're gonna bring this meeting of Longdale City Council to order. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to give us the roll call.
Mayor Pro Tim Osborne.
Here.
Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Kearney.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Mayor Pullen Miles.
Here.
Next, we're gonna have our flag salute led by Councilmember Pat Kearney. And I believe a word of inspiration. Okay.
Please stand. Place your right hand over your heart and repeat along with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing.
Thank you, Father. We want to thank you for this opportunity, for allowing us to be here tonight, Longdale City Council, and thank you for our staff and all our residents and all our commissioners. We ask, Father, that you bless these proceedings, that they go smoothly, and that there be edifying for the body and also for our city. We ask, Father, that you continue to bless all our public safety and officers and all of our public works and staff, all those who are out in the public, and that you protect them as they do their work, and that you continue to bless us in our personal lives as well, and that we will continue to grow as a community. And all these things we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let's have our public safety report, brother Lieutenant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for February fourth through February eighteenth. On February fourth, approximately ten thirty P.M., Deputy Hermina responded to the forty-three-hundred block of Fermona Avenue regarding a burglary that had just occurred. The victim called, and they called on hearing doors of their vehicle being slammed. When the victim looked outside, she saw a female inside of her truck. The victim exited as a resident, confronted the female. The victim yelled at the suspect, and the suspect ran. A deputy searched the surrounding area and detained a female matching the suspect's description. A field show-up was conducted, and the victim positively identified the suspect who entered her vehicle and stole items. The suspect was placed in arrest for burglary and transported to the South Bay Station. On February eighth, from six P.M. to two A.M., our traffic service details from our risk management bureau conducted a DUI, driver's license checkpoint at Main Avenue and Mansell Avenue. DUI checkpoints are placed in locations based on collision statistics and frequency of DUI arrests. Last year, Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department investigated three hundred and ninety-five DUI collisions that killed twenty-one people and five hundred and ninety others injured. That night during the operation resulted in two arrests, one for DUI and one for a person driving on suspended license. On February ninth, in the morning, units responded to the forty-seven-hundred block of Marine Avenue regarding a vandalism call. A witness stated that a male was vandalizing his aid vehicle, and then suspect fled. Units responded to the location. They detained a male matching that description from the call, and it was determined that at the location, there was a vehicle that had shattered windshield and had dents all around the vehicle. Again, another field show-up was conducted where the witness had positively identified the person vandalizing the vehicle. That person was placed under arrest for felony vandalism and transported to South Bay Station. Also, on February twelfth, at seven thirty A.M., Deputy Saldana responded to the forty-five-hundred block of One Sixty-Sixth Street regarding a trespassing call. The location is unoccupied and under construction, and there's posted signs saying no trespassing. Deputy Saldana spoke to the witness outside the location, and the witness stated that he saw the male enter the location and forcibly enter through the front door. Nobody at the location had permission to be at the location. Deputy Saldana later detained the male inside the location, and he was charging his cellphone. Shortly after, the owner arrived and stated that he had problems with the suspect in the past, where he had threatened him with bodily harm. Based on the above information, the suspect was arrested for burglary, trespassing, and theft of utilities. This concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions on any topics.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Is there any questions of the lieutenant's safety report?
No questions, but thanks for the activity.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, items from Madam City Clerk.
I just wanted to remind everybody that we are still accepting applications for some of our boards that we currently have openings for, and I would like to encourage everyone to go ahead and fill out an application either online or picking one up at the city clerk's office. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, now we are at oral communications. Excuse me, oral communications, when you have the opportunity to speak to this body being in Longdale City Council on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to the Longdale City Council on oral communications, we ask that you line up by the flag when it becomes your turn. If you would have come to the podium, if you would start with your name. At about two minutes, the amber light usually comes on, but they won't come on tonight, so we'll give you the signal. So I look for myself. Our city clerk will give you the signal to start wrapping things up at about two minutes. So don't look for the amber light. Let's have our first speaker.
Randall Ebron, West Hundred Seventy-First Street. Tonight, I'm providing a list of about twenty short-term rentals to the city clerk, and I'd like to be informed of the disposition of each submission, since the city claims it is investigating and taking action. As these are being reported tonight, this should be the city's criteria of being reactive rather than proactive. I'm also providing a page from Hollywoodhomes.com, a website providing an overall list as to some of the short-term rental locations that tracks you to websites such as Airbnb. Each dot on their map represents a short-term rental, a lot more than twenty. I think that few people believe that Longdale is an attractive vacation destination, offering amenities and touristy points of interest. Longdale is on the fringe of desirable destinations, therefore it will attract a certain clientele. Hotels understand this and have targeted this population. They have registered, acquired business licenses, and paid taxes to the city, and should not have any unregulated and illegal business competing for their legitimate livelihood. Hotels are required to provide parking, advised by the impact studies that were taken, to allow them to build their businesses in the city. This is now threatened by the illegal Airbnbs and homestay rentals cropping up in our neighborhoods unchecked by enforcement. These rentals undermine any efforts to preserve affordable housing and operate without the regulations imposed on ordinary homeowners in the city. Hotels provide revenue jobs in the city. They are required to follow regulations regarding fire, security, and safety to ensure the safety of their guests. Short-term rentals answer to no one and most likely do not pay taxes, which is a felony. Many have probably made unpermitted changes that can pose a threat to the visitor and neighbors from faulty wiring, unstructured supports. Stories are emerging about hidden cameras in the bedrooms of these rentals. Does anyone wonder how safe the internet is in these unregulated rentals? What and who has taken the financial information? These unwitting visitors are freely providing their host or technically strangers. These people running illegal operations are criminals, and the city needs to become more proactive in enforcing the law and increasing fines. Street parking in Longdale and all the South Bay cities is practically non-existent for residents.
Sixty seconds.
So to allow vacation rentals to further impact this problem is irresponsible. Any resident who has received a ticket for failure to remove his car's three sweeping day has to pay this ticket. How do you enforce and collect from out-of-town visitors? Previously, I provided the city with numerous lists of these illegal rentals easily found on the internet. Can the city provide us with data on how many of these rentals have actually been investigated and why they're still operating despite reporting them to the municipal services department? We have been told repeatedly that the city would do more to advertise it were this evident. A small section on the back pages of the biennial Longdale is inadequate. Why is the signage off the freeway being utilized for these purposes? Warrant postings added to the existing parking signs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Pam London, One Seventy-First. I really hope that the city will look into all of this Airbnb stuff a lot further, because if you're gonna put it on the books, then let's find a way to uphold it. At one point, I believe the city was going to send a letter to Airbnb about the city's code regarding short-term rentals, and I was wondering if that had been done. I believe it was last year, it could have been the year before, I talked about two thousand-plus business licenses that had not been applied for rental properties in the city. I don't know if there was any action on that or if any further improvements had come of that, but I do know that I complain a lot about licensing, whether it be dog license, business license, real estate license, whatever in this city, and I really hope that somehow or another the city will look into the lack of licensing and the people involved in the city who don't necessarily have their license and do something about that, too, because if you're gonna run a business, or if you're gonna have rentals, then you need to have those licensed. And the Airbnb, the parking, the everything else, there's a lot of problems in this city, and we'd really like to see a lot of this stuff addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
I'm the new homeowner here in the city of Longdale, along with my wife, and...
Can you state your name?
Oh, sorry. Bahram Manahedi, B.A.H.R.A.M.M.A.N.A.H.E.D.G.I. Anyway, there was a fence front of the property which we replaced it last February. We put the first row of the wall in February, and it was there for almost three months. Did not get any notice from the city regarding pulling a permit until end of May, when the second time the effort was to finish the bill, the wall. So I naturally pulled a permit. On inspection day, I wasn't called. I stayed home all day. Nobody notified me that the inspector was there and left, and later on, I find out the wall did not pass the inspection, claiming it is being too high, more than thirty inches. I have all the evidence, all the pictures there. I don't know how I could give it to you or show it to you, and now the city is suing me for something without explaining to me it is too high from what kind of regulation, because I apply all the regulation that they gave me to that wall. And now, in a couple of days, also I'm hearing with the city attorney. I'm trying to save some money by not hiring an attorney, but this is a very, very unfair situation right from the beginning. Number one, the wall, the first row, was there for three months. Nobody gave me any notice. Then after that, when the third day that the wall was finished, I got a notice, so I pulled a permit, and then the day that I had inspection, they didn't even call me, and then I have to go and do the re-inspection.
Sixty seconds.
The inspector came and put the tape measure on a hole that I built, that I removed the soil to put the garden there. So my wall is not, you know, high enough. You guys are residents of this city. I beg you, I ask you, just to go and look at it or see my evidence. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, at this time, we're gonna close public comment and bring it up to the diocese for any comments. If there are any from the council, let's start with Councilmember Reed.
All righty. Thank you very much. Thank you for everybody for speaking. I know we've hit the Airbnb before, and we've got our particular piece. I'm gonna pass that on to Steve Mandoki, our city manager, and see if there's anything we can do on checking all those locations.
There is. In fact, a letter did go out to Airbnb Corporation. If it fell on deaf ears, more than likely. Staff has also been working, I guess, what's the best way to put it, but kind of like behind the scenes to arrange rentals and cite from those rentals that have been confirmed. I don't want to disclose too much, because they are doing this, and yes, there are a lot. We don't allow rentals, short-term rentals like that in the city, but again, we have two officers who are doing what they can along with their other cases. In terms of business licenses, when we find those two, we do cite. We have a number of open cases for people who don't have licenses for their rental units, for their long-term rental units, and do you want me to continue on the last item?
Yep.
I'd be happy to. But, and as I was gonna start with, and as the city attorney just reminded me, it is an open code enforcement case. In fact, a week and a half or so ago, I did meet with the gentleman, along with three staff members, who had also talked to him in the past, and there are issues with the wall, as he mentioned, the flat work. One thing that was mentioned, that the work was going on for three months, and that's actually correct, three months without a permit, no knowledge of the city. When it was seen and observed or reported, then action was taken, but for three months without the permit, we weren't aware of it, so that's why the work continued, and so it didn't justify it. But it is an open case. There is a office hearing this Thursday with the city attorney's office. Unfortunately, it's escalated to that point, and that's where we are today.
Thank you very much. All right, that's all I have. Thank you, everybody.
That's pretty much it. Pat Kearney.
Well, since Councilmember Reed said everything, I'll just pass it on to my colleague to my right, and say, "Diddle."
I just want to thank everybody that came out tonight, and I'll pass along as well.
Mayor Pro Tim Osborne.
I had just one question. I got the handout from Randall. Were these weekly fees that are on the handout that you presented, or were those nightly?
They're nightly.
We're getting five hundred and seventy-eight dollars a night?
I'm pretty sure they're nightly.
Wow.
You said "week."
Wow. Longdale's worth more than you'd think, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, Steve told me that he's been working on this, and it is ongoing, so thanks for bringing it to our attention. That's all I have.
You hear what I said? I said, "We."
Say what?
You said "we."
I thought it was a "week," not a "night."
Let's see. I think we've pretty much covered all of the items. Let's make sure we didn't miss anything. Yeah, I think we pretty much covered everything, so I will pass as well, but I want to thank everyone who came out to speak as well. Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda will be our consent calendar, item number, letter G. What is the pleasure of this body concerning this consent calendar?
I don't see any questions popping up. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, and the city...
Wait a second.
Okay, the city attorney will read items number two and three.
Yes.
It was made by Reed, and seconded by... Madam City Attorney.
Item two is ordinance number one-one-five-six dash one-nine, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Longdale, California, amending Longdale Municipal Code Section five-point-oh-eight, point-oh-six-oh, five-point-two-four, point-two-hundred, five-point-two-four, point-two-twenty, to update the process for taxicab drivers and company. And item, the other ordinance is ordinance number one-one-five-four dash one-nine, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Longdale, California, to add Longdale Municipal Code Section twelve-point-oh-eight, point-one-hundred, establishing a street cut moratorium on newly paved streets. Thank you.
Without any further discussion, would the council please vote on the consent calendar?
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is item number seven under administration, the mayor's appointment to the city planning commission appointments. At this time, I would like to appoint and ask for the ratification of the council or the following four individuals to the city's planning commission. Ufi Muller, Scott Smith, both of them are incumbents, Johnny Martinez, Jeffrey Dogo, and Shirley, Dogo, there you go, and Shirley Cuevas. We have, as you can notice, I have one new person that would be joining if it's ratified, the commission. Hopefully, I'm saying Jeffrey's last name correctly. Dongo. Dongo, okay. There you go, Jeffrey Dongo. There we go. So with that being the case, those would be my appointment for the planning commission.
Are you looking for a motion to accept?
I'm looking for a motion. Yes, motion to accept.
Yeah, so move. Okay.
Like quicker than that. Okay, so the motion's been made that we approved the mayor's appointment to the planning commission by Osborne and seconded by...
I'll second it.
Pat Kearney. Is there any discussions on the motion?
No, did you want to recognize any of the items?
I do want to recognize. I mentioned it to the commissioners that if you're a new commissioner, we'd love if you would come up and say, maybe one minute, if you're a returning commissioner, unless you just feel compelled to, you don't have to come up. We appreciate it. But let us, let's see if it works out first. Would the council please vote?
Motion carries unanimously.
So I'm gonna ask Jeffrey to come and give us a few words of introduction, and I want to thank my returning commissioners for continuing to serve under the city of Longdale. We know particularly the planning commission takes a lot of time, a lot of commitment, a lot of study, a lot of reading, staying up on the issue, because it is, in addition to being an advisory board to the city council, it is a quasi-judicial board, and with that, you know, they have a lot of various legal requirements that other commissioners don't, commissions don't have, so I particularly want to thank you for, you guys, for your continued serving on that committee, on that commission. Commissioner.
All right, my, let me introduce myself to people that don't know me. My name is Jeffrey Dongo. I'm not new to the area. I grew up in Hawthorne, Longdale. I come from the banking industry. I believe in long-term relationships. I've been in the area of Longdale, living down the street, for nine years. My kids go to the school right here, Lucille Smith, so what I want to do is bring my background, bring some common sense and some integrity, and see what I can do and add value to the board, and see I can actually help and be part of the community and have some stronger roots here in the community of Longdale.
Welcome, and thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, we're now on item number eight under administration. This also is a mayor's appointment to the Parks, Recreation, and Social Services Commission. We do have one new person. She's probably, she sent me a text, was delayed from work and was in traffic. But at this time, I'd like to nominate the following individuals to serve on the Parks and Recs Commission: Daniel Woods, Shirley Rudolph, Madonna Sitka, Christina Carroll, and Erica Harbison.
I shall move it.
Okay, so in reverse order, the motion's been made by Kearney, seconded by Osborne, that the mayor's appointment be ratified. Is there any discussion on motion?
I just had one question. We had one point of concern that we had mentioned.
No.
Okay.
It didn't work out. Okay.
Good jury of justice.
Would the council please vote? Oh, you said it was concerned, and it kind of worked out.
Motion approved unanimously.
Okay, if Ms. Christina Carroll, if she appears before we adjourn, I'll have her introduce herself. But once again, I want to thank also the Parks and Recs Commissioners for continued serving. There we go. Continued serving on the board. There you go. On the board as well. I mean, Shirley was on it before, that's why I was looking at it again. Okay, she's on the planning now. Thank you for your continued service. Appreciate it. Okay, with that being, in case, we are now on item nine. This is city representation on outside agencies, intergovernmental agencies. Let's have the staff report.
Honorable mayor and councilmembers, the item before you is to appoint delegates and alternates to the following intergovernmental agencies: California Contract Cities Association, California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, Centinela Youth Services, County Sanitation District Number Five, League California Cities, and South Bay Cities Council of Governments. The terms for these appointments will expire December thirty-first, 2020. That concludes staff's report.
Okay, thanks for that report. Okay, at this point, we just have kind of like a free discussion on who we want to represent us on these various boards, so anyone can go first.
Anyone go in line?
No, anyone can just throw out. If there's a board that you want to be on, let's ask Daniel Reed. What does he want to do? You want to continue on the...
I'd be happy to continue unless somebody else wants to step up. I'd go up for alternate if they did.
Well, I'd be happy to stay as the alternate if you continue as the regular.
I'll keep on top of them.
Or somebody else is the regular. Okay, is that, is that okay?
That's fine.
So we'll put Daniel Reed as the delegate for Contract Cities and Pullen Miles as the alternate. Let's go to the joint insurance. This is a heavy lift, because this requires one meeting a year in La Palma.
I think you're doing a great job, Roberts. I think you should stay on there.
I think I'm doing a great job, too.
And I'll stay on. I'm doing a great job as an alternate.
And you're doing a great job as an alternate. Okay, so we'll have...
Has the alternate ever attended this meeting?
I said it. Have fun.
Just checking.
He's very supportive, yeah. Very supportive, yeah. So that would be the California Joint Powers Insurance Authorities, Robert Pullen Miles as the delegate, and Pat Kearney as the alternate. Okay, the Centinela Youth Services Board of Directors. Currently, we have Bernadette Suarez.
And I'd like it to say that way, if that's okay.
Okay, Bernadette Suarez as the delegate.
I would love to be the alternate.
And you would love to continue to be in the alternate, so Pat Kearney...
I'll take her.
You're very alternate tonight.
So he is the alternate. So the alternate, alternate. So Pat Kearney is the...
Alternate alternate.
Alternate. Okay, the Sanitation District Number Five, Los Angeles County. Their bylaws require the presiding officer for each city to be the representative, so I will continue as the delegate for the sanitation district and...
Let me be the alternate, too.
You want to?
Yeah.
He's very alternative.
Okay.
I'll take that one, too.
And Pat Kearney will continue to be very supportive as an alternate on the sanitation district. The next board is... Oh, the League of Cities. It's funny, because I was looking at this agenda, and is this new? It's probably not new, and you guys are gonna get a kick out of it. It says there's meetings on the first Thursday of each month, and I thought to myself, the League of California Cities have monthly meetings? Is that true? They've always had monthly meetings?
Typically. I attend the conference only.
Well, when did I get the notices? I mean, I do attend occasionally, but I didn't know it was, you know, monthly meetings. Wow, okay. So I mean, I've missed a few meetings there. Okay, so I'll continue.
Continuously.
Unless someone else would like to be the deputy.
Give me a chance to fix that.
Yeah, give me a chance to fix that.
Do you want to be an alternate?
I thought they meant like quarterly, like... And did you want to be...
I can continue to be the alternate.
Missing being alternate. Did you go to any of those meetings?
You can let me know when I can make it.
So Bernadette Suarez would be the alternate of the League of California Cities, and that's every month. Now that we know.
Except two months out of the year.
Yes. And the South Bay Council of Governments Board of Directors.
I've been the delegate on that for five years. I think it's time for fresh set of eyes.
And I was the delegate for about six years.
So what you're saying is we should make Bernadette Suarez a delegate?
I'll switch out and be the delegate.
Okay, so we'll...
You can have multiple alternates on that board.
Okay, so we'll assign Bernadette Suarez as the delegate, and we will assign James Osborne and Robert Pullen Miles as the alternates.
We could all be alternates on the board.
Is that okay?
So choose.
And I'll show up when they make me upset. And I'll show up when they make me upset.
Or for dinner.
Or for dinner. Okay, okay, so that's, that would be all the intergovernmental agencies today. So with that, do we need to make one, one motion? You want to summarize that, or you, you get it all?
Motion moved.
Okay. So the motion's been made by Osborn and seconded by Reed that we make the said appointments to the inter-agency, yeah, intergovernmental agencies. Is there any discussion on the, the motion? Nope. Would the council please vote?
Motion approved unanimously.
Thank you, Mrs. City Clerk, Deputy City Clerk. Next item on the, the agenda, item number ten, items from council members, mayor and council members. Let's go with Councilmember Daniel Reed.
So I had no, I had no new meetings in the last two weeks, but I did forget to mention, and we'll deal this at a later meeting, we did lose Antoinette Delane in January. I did manage to make it over to her memorial as a last-minute invitation. So I'm not sure how, how widespread that's gotten out, so some people may not know, so just letting it know.
Okay, thank you for bringing that to our attention, and we will, let's see, who else? Let's go with Mr. Pat Kearney.
Okay, I attended a funeral for Phyllis Hatcher, and a celebration memorial for Jimmy Williams, which was Cody Williams and Greg, Cody Williams' husband and Greg Williams' father, and that's it.
I have nothing to report. Pass it along.
Okay, thank you. Nothing to report, okay. I don't think I attend any meetings, but I did go on a, a tour of bioenergy waste recycling. It's not really waste recycling, but I don't know what you call it, but I'm calling it waste recycling, because they basically take, take waste and put it through this digester and then make fertilizer in pellets and bricks for, for various uses, and it's a facility out of Gardena. So I did go on that tour. It seemed like there was another one that I wanted to report to that I went to.
Did you do it? Was it a tour or was it an LAX tour?
No, I didn't. No, I didn't go on that one this time. I've been there so many times. Okay, so that's all I have then. If I come up with a report next week.
We're done.
With that, I think we pretty much have exhausted our docket. Okay, it's adjournment time. So we will close in the, the memory of Antoinette, it's Delane, right?
Yeah.
Antoinette Delane as well, she was a longtime resident here in the city of, of Longdale. We'll adjourn in her memory. We will also close tonight in memory of a former Longdale resident, Eddie Domingo, who passed away today, okay, at, at age fifty-seven after suffering a recent stroke. He is survived by his two daughters, Stevie and Sammy. Eddie was a musician who also performed several times at the Longdale's Blues Festivals, and he's played with, with Osborn, and he was the drummer, and we will close in his memory tonight as well. And Mr. Osborn, you can say something.
Yeah, I just wanted to say Eddie was a great guy, very affable, very friendly, had countless friends, and they're all shocked at this because he's relatively a young man. But anyone that attended the Blues Festival, you saw Eddie, he was a powerhouse. I think he drew more people to that event than anybody else, and really sorry to see him go, because we'd been very good friends for almost forty years.
We adjourned his name, and our hearts go out to his, his family as well. With that, the, the next regular scheduled meeting of the Longdale City Council will be held at 6:30 PM on Monday, March the fourth, in Longdale City Hall Council Chambers. It is now, it's now seven or eight, and this meeting is adjourned.